Moors must start understanding, there's only two classifications. Either you're Moors national of your state, or you're stateless Moore. We're learning that now, to understand how does the ICJ, and international law, say that Moore should be in pop your persona? What is in pop your persona? Being a proper person, and understand how to use politics, to your advantage of understanding how to utilize state, as your political status, and using your sovereignty through the state, in order to maintain your rights, your sovereign rights. Moors must start understanding politics. Understanding that we can no longer try to enforce treaties, under what is called self-executed. Moors can no longer try to self-execute treaties, or constitution. Moors must understand the word "Moors" is an international word in itself. Because soon you say "Moors," that encompasses the entire world. So if Moors start to correspond and interact with each other, we should start asking each other, are you a Moors national of your state? Or are you a stateless Moore of the United States? And like I've said, you'll be surprised how many Moors will want to be on the right side of the law, once they start understanding international law. So today being Class 20, Class 20, what did we learn from Class 19? The bottom line of what we learned from Class 19 is this. The ICJ will not accept de facto courts. And if they don't accept de facto courts, that means they will not accept de facto governments. Moors have to start understanding, we must be de jure and not de facto. Everything the Moors have been doing since 1913 has been an excellent exercise in understanding law. We've been studying state statutes. We've been trying to study the Constitution for the United States of America. All of that has been helping us with our 1, 2, 3s and ABCs. But now it's time for us to increase our level of degrees, and graduate to understanding international law. And when you start understanding international law, you quickly find out that all of the countries, nations around the world agree that your sovereign rights can only be enforced through your state sovereignty. Alright, so it's a political status that we're talking about. State means political. State means government. So therefore, we must understand that all of our sovereign rights now come through the state. Constitutions, and treaties, decorations, conventions, et cetera, are all enforced through your state. Alright? So, what we learned in Class 19 was the understanding that if Moors are de facto, then we, then our status means that we can't enforce the treaties. Moors must start understanding that the ICJ and the United Nations will not accept anyone that's de facto. Alright? So, why do we continue to keep going over this ICJ report? We continue to go to ICJ report, understanding this is Class 20. What's the subject matter? Transversity United States of America, 1952. Today being the 6th class, go back to Class 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19. Today being the 20th class on the same subject matter. Why are we going over this in the first place? Moors must start comprehending how to use the basic fundamentals of how we secure consulate court. How do we maintain our government? How do we understand how to use the principles to defend our sovereign rights through the state? And how to also be a petitioner, the plaintiff, in dealing with another foreigner that's in our land. Another foreigner that we're trying to maintain jurisdiction of our own. When foreigners encroach into our jurisdiction, what do we use as a defense in dealing with them? Or when we want to deal with foreigners in terms of petitioning something that they owe to us? We must now start understanding the building blocks of consulate court. So when we study ICJ, ICJ is nothing but consulate court. Alright, so what truly is ICJ? What truly is the United Nations? They're referees. You must understand, in any organized sport, there's always referees, just like in boxing, right, as an example. When you get into a ring as two opposing boxers, the referee tells you two things. Protect yourself at all times. No hitting below the belt. That's the referee's job, those specific instructions. So what is the ICJ and the UN? They're the referee in the ring. But every Moore has a responsibility and obligation to protect themselves at all times. And to make sure that the referee that's in that ring knows to tell the other opponent they can't hit below the belt. What does that mean? That's a foul. So therefore, Moors must understand, the ICJ is there as a referee to help secure our sovereign rights of the state as parties. Whether we're petitioners as parties, or whether we're the respondent as parties through the state. So we must start understanding why are we talking about the ICJ so much? Because more than likely, there's a high probability that the Moors would end up in ICJ to deal with this privileged, limited jurisdiction of the United States of America, who's going to try and give us appeal or challenge to our sovereign rights. Alright, so let's continue on. We always want to open up with understanding, what is the mission and vision of Moors? It is to do what? Create the United States of Morocco, that must be known. So therefore, Moors out there, right now who are stateless, create your states. Let's create the United States of Morocco, and how do we do that? By studying the Europeans. What do I mean when I say study Europeans? Study international law. Nogadzouali said what? He's gonna need the Europeans here to teach us government. And after that, run government. So let's run government by studying the ICJ, alright? Now remember where we left off. ICJ throughout all of France, basic concepts, that they had, what they call competent courts. ICJ said that France did not have competent courts in Morocco, that Morocco did not have competent consulate courts. So the ICJ threw it out, why? Because it was tainted and everybody was de facto. You must remember that from Class 19. So in Class 20, what we're going to do is we're gonna skip over what's called the Third Contention. Of the United States is based upon the nature of the arrangements which led to the termination of Spanish consulate jurisdiction and the French. So we're gonna skip the Third Contention. Moors at home should just read it for their own sake of understanding it. But it was talking about jurisdiction between Spain and France. Let's get down to the fourth contention. That gets into more subject matter, as it relates to, between Moors and the United States of America. Alright? So keep in mind, the Fourth Contention, we'll read the Fourth, Fifth, and Sixth. Hopefully we'll get to the Sixth in this particular class. But we'll start here. So give you a quick brief what's happening, this between the United States of America, and more specifically the Moors, as consulate court is looking at jurisdiction, alright, as it relates to treaties, et cetera. Okay? So we have a mother start to read what's called the Fourth Contention.
The Fourth Contention of the United States is that the extensive consulate jurisdiction, as it existed in Morocco in the year 1880, was recognized and confirmed by the provisions of the Madrid Convention. And that the United States, as a party to that convention, thereby acquired an autonomous right to the exercise of such jurisdictions independently of the operation of the most favored nation clauses.
Stop. So immediately, the ICJ is reiterating a viewpoint that the United States has. Right now, they're just trying to tell you exactly what the United States was saying. This is not what the court hasn't made a decision just yet. So as we're reading, just understand, this is the contention that the United States put on the record based upon their own presumptions and assumptions, alright? Continue on.
There can be no doubt that the exercise of consulate jurisdiction in Morocco in the year 1880 was general, or that the convention presupposed the existence of such jurisdiction. It dealt with the special position of proteges and contained provisions for the exercise of jurisdiction with regard to them.
So as we've already learned, as soon as the ICJ refers to proteges, you know they're talking about Moors. What type of Moors? Protected Moors. More specifically, Moors will be branded as Negro, Black and Color, Negro, Indian, et cetera, right? It's a misnomer, a nom de guerre under a protective status. Thus, the reason why they won't simply just say the word "Moors." Because "Moors" has been redefined under a protective status. So they use the code word "protege" because that's how the word was used in the 1880 Treaty of Madrid, protections in Morocco, alright? Let's continue.
On the other hand, it is equally clear that there were no provisions of the convention which expressly brought about a confirmation of the then-existing system of consulate jurisdiction, or its establishment as an independent and autonomous right. The purposes and objects of this convention were stated in this preamble, in its preamble, in the following words. The necessity of establishing on fixed and uniform basis the exercise of the right of protection in Morocco, and of settling certain questions connected therewith. In these circumstances, the court cannot adopt a construction by implication of the provisions of the Madrid Convention, which would go beyond the scope of its declared purposes and objects. Further, this contention would involve radical changes and additions to the provisions of the convention. The court, in its opinion, interpretation of peace treaties. Second page, ICJ Reports, 10/1950, page 229, stated, it is the duty of the court to interpret the treaties, not to revise them.
So what do we learn from just this quick paragraph? What is the ICJ saying here? The ICJ said they took a look at the 1880 treaty that the United States of America is claiming, that the United States of America is now can separate themselves, that they have jurisdiction over Moors in Morocco. This United States of America just coming up with a presumption and assumption based upon the 1880 Treaty of Madrid, protections in Morocco. The United States of America said, well, we're protecting Moors, which means we should automatically have jurisdiction. But that's not necessarily the case, because the United States of America, the reason why they got protection over Moors, is because they usurped the Moors. It's not because they got the Moors protection, I mean permission, or consent, or consent. We'll learn more about that today, okay? So what is the ICJ saying? You gotta really understand, why did they quote the preamble of the 1880 treaty? Let's go back to the preamble that they quoted, okay? Says that the purpose of the objects of this convention were stated in the preamble, remember what I told you, Moors at home? The ICJ always looks at the preamble of every treaty, convention, declaration, constitution, and understand the consciousness, the concepts, and the context of what was wrote initially before you get into the articles. So watch this. Here's how Moors must see this. The preamble in the following words of the 1880 treaty said what? The necessities of establishing on fixed and uniform basis the exercise of the right of protection in Morocco, and of settling certain questions connected therewith. That's kinda interesting how they just kinda grab that section. But they're telling Moors something very important. They're telling the United States something very important. What is that? Let's break it down. We learned in Video 19 what they're saying. Watch this. When we studied United Nations, rights of indigenous people, we went over Articles 1 through 6. In Article 5, it says, "Moors have the right to maintain and strengthen their distinct political, legal, economic, social, and cultural institutions," meaning government, "while retaining their right to participate fully in their government if they so choose." Then they resummarize. So the instructions is what? Put together your politics which controls your economic, social, and cultural life through the state. Those, these are what you call instructions. This is what the ICJ was saying about the 1880 treaty, watch. In the preamble, it says what? The necessity of establishing. See, Moors have to establish what? Government. But what are they talking about? The 1880 treaty, let's go to it. 1880 treaty said what? What does Article 15 say in the 18 treaty, 1880 treaty? "Any subject of Morocco who has been naturalized in a foreign country and who shall return to Morocco shall have to have remained for a length of time equal to that which shall have been regularly necessary for him to obtain such naturalization." Choose, listen. Choose, choose, choose between entire submission to the laws of the empire, i.e. government, state, and the obligation to acquit Morocco, your government, state, unless it shall be proved that his naturalization in a foreign country was obtained with the consent of the government of Morocco. This word "choose," choose between, watch, Moors. Choose. The United Nations is sending you signals based upon Article 15 of the Treaty of Madrid. Because the article of Treaty, Article 8, excuse me. The Treaty of Madrid, Article 15, talks about what? Politics. Why is it talking about politics? We gotta break this down. Going back to Article 15. What are you choosing? To submit to what? The laws of the empire-state, and the obligations of the Moroccan government. You have to choose. Where is it at? Choose. Choose, Moors must choose where they remain naturalized if so true or Moore subjects. Or they're gonna choose to be a part of Moroccan government. The rights indigenous people is repeating that again. Moors must choose what? Politics. Politics. Politics, all of this is politics. Once you choose your politics, that's when it creates freedom. That's when you can have a nation. So let's go back to what the ICJ is saying. You gotta understand what the ICJ is saying, watch this. It's gonna make a little more sense to you now, watch. "The purpose and objects of the convention, Treaty of Madrid, 1880, Article 15, were stated in the preamble in the following words. The necessity of establishing what? Government. On a fixed and uniform basis." What's fixed and uniform? Government. The exercise of the right of protection. How do you protect yourself? Through fixed, uniform basis of establishing government. That's how you protect your rights in Morocco. And of settling certain questions connecting therewith. See, right there, certain question, watch, excuse me. Settling. Settling. Settling certain questions. How do Moors settle the certain questions of jurisdiction? State. Let's go back to rights indigenous people. How do Moors settle the certain question about jurisdiction? State. Choose. State. Choose what? Politics, what is politics? State. You gotta choose politics of the state. The ICJ is telling us that. "In order to settle certain questions about jurisdiction, Moors have to establish government on a fixed and uniform basis. Then they can exercise their right of protections to protect who? Themselves." Nogadzouali said what? I gave you everything to save a nation. Take it. Save yourself. The ICJ is saying the same thing to Moors. You have to save yourself by creating your government. Your government creates your political status. Let's take it from the top and read the rest. "The purpose and objects of this convention were stated in its preamble in the following words. The necessity of establishing fixed and uniform basis government, the exercise of the right of protections through your government in Morocco, settling the certain question." What question? Jurisdiction connected therewith. "In these circumstances, the court cannot adopt a construction by implication of the provisions of the Madrid Convention which would go beyond the scope of its declared purposes and objects. Further, this contention would involve radical changes and additions to the provisions of the convention. The court, in its opinion, interpretation of peace treaties." And it goes to some little definitions, it says, "It is the duty of the court to interpret the treaties, not to revise them." Why did they say not to revise them? The ICJ wasn't gonna come out and say the Moors had to enforce Article 15 of the Treaty of Madrid. That's the Moors' responsibility, to bring their dispute to the ICJ. No one can bring a dispute to the ICJ but Moors.
The two parties, right?
The two parties. So the two parties is the de jure state of a Moroccan state versus the United States of America, or one of their several states. But the only way to be a party, you must be a state. So you gotta catch what the ICJ is saying here. We just can't give Moors rights. Moors gotta come get their own rights by using a referee called the ICJ. And the ICJ and all nations are bound to the United Nations' charge. And it's all about equality. That must be known. Let's continue. Alright, so now we're going into the Fifth Contention. So we addressed the Fourth. What did the ICJ say? These Moors gotta come and make their own claim. France is doing it, but France can't, it's not a Moore. Let's go into the Fifth Contention.
The Fifth Contention of the United States is that the consulate jurisdiction in Morocco was recognized and confirmed by various provisions of the Act of Algiers and that the United States acquired an autonomous right to exercise such jurisdiction independently of the operation of the most favored nation clauses. In 1906, the Twelve Powers and Algiers, all exercised capitulatory rights and privileges to the extent that they were prescribed either by the General Treaty with Great Britain of 1856, or by the Spanish Treaty of 1861. They did so by virtue of direct treaty grant, as in the case of Great Britain or Spain, or by virtue of most favored nation clauses, as in the case of the United States, or without treaty rights, but with the consent or acquiescence of Morocco, as in the case of certain other states. Accordingly, the Act of Algiers presupposed the existence of the regime of capitulations, including the rights of consulate jurisdiction and many of its provisions assigned particular functions to the then-existing consulate tribunals. Reference has been made in the course of the argument to Articles 19, 23, 24, 25, 29, 45, 59, 80, 81, 87, 91, 101, 102, and 119. For example, Chapter 5, which deals with the customs of the empire and the repression of fraud and smuggling, contains Article 102, which provides, "Every confiscation, fine, or penalty must be imposed on foreigners by consulate jurisdiction and on Moore subjects by Sharifian jurisdiction."
Stop. What have we learned thus far by reading this paragraph? What is the ICJ laying out? Why are we reading this in the first place? Moors must start understanding, if you're using consulate court and your government, these are basic fundamentals that the Moors must use in their defense. If you're in a boxing ring, the instructions is, protect yourself at all times. So what is this? Defense. Protect yourself at all times. That's all the rap can tell you, protect yourself at all times. Our first defense is understanding our defense, what are our rights? This is defense that we're learning. ICJ is teaching us how to get our rights back of our each state by these basic fundamentals. But listen to what they said, did you catch it? Let's start right here. "They did so by virtue of direct treaty grant, as in the case of Great Britain or Spain, or by virtue of most favored nation clauses, as in the case of the United States, or without treaty rights, but with the consent or acquiescence of Morocco." See what the ICJ just pointed out? Something Morocco consented to. But some things Morocco acquiesced. In Morocco, what does acquiescence mean? Negro, Black, and Color. When you're claiming to be Negro, Black, and Color, that's what you call acquiescence up in Morocco. You agreed to be a part of a brand, which immediately under acquiescence gives someone else jurisdiction over you. That's why Nogadzouali came to us and said, "We're not Negro or Black and Color." Because by acquiescence, you're saying now you're not a Moore anymore. So you must understand, even the ICJ is pointing out this word consent or acquiescence of Morocco. Who's Morocco? The Moors. "As in the case of certain other states." Who's the other states? Moors have to create their states. They're talking about the Moors. So consent or acquiescence of Moors, and in case of certain other states. So they're always talking about states. Moors must create their states. Once we create a state, we're no longer stateless, and now we can make, we can defend ourselves at all times. Don't worry about being on offense. First, we have to learn defense. Fundamentals of defense. Let's continue. "Accordingly, the Act of Algiers presumed, presumed, presupposed, excuse me, the existence of the regime of capitulations, including the rights of consulate jurisdiction." That's why we're talking about consulate court. We're talking consulate jurisdiction. The United States of America is claiming that they have jurisdiction. You're gonna learn that ICJ is giving them pushback on that, okay? So let's finish this sentence. "Accordingly, the Act of Algiers presumed," excuse me, "presupposed the existence of the regime of capitulations, including the rights of consulate jurisdiction and many of its provisions assigned particular functions to then-existing consulate tribunals." Reference has been made in the course of the argument to Articles 19, several Articles, right? And then they come down here and they quote the most important one, 102. This is why I'm talking about 102 as a relation to the Act of Algiers of 1906. This is one of the most important Articles. Okay? What does it say? "Every confiscation, fine, or penalty must be imposed on foreigners by consulate jurisdiction and on Moore subjects by who? Sharifian jurisdiction." What does that mean? So when I write down up here, consulate court. Notice at the bottom, put contempt of court. Fines, penalties, confiscations. Where did I get that from? 102. But only consulate court can impose fines, penalties, and confiscations. You must understand that it never said the United States of America had jurisdiction. Who did they say had the jurisdiction? Sharifian jurisdiction. What is Sharifian? Moors. But what Sharifian really mean, we'll look up the definition, means government. If Moors don't have government, they can't enforce a consulate court because it's de facto, which means they cannot impose fines, penalties, and confiscations. But if Moors put together a constitution, seal, flag, have public inaugurations, pledge their open allegiance, put together a state, put together a three-praise of government, now all of a sudden, now you can use what? Sharifian authority. Jurisdiction, you have jurisdiction to impose confiscations, fines, and penalties. The United States is not the Sharifian authority. Neither are Moors that are if so true or Moore subjects. The United States is not the Sharifian authority. Neither are Moors that are Black Moors. The United States is not the Sharifian Authority. Neither are Moors that are sovereign citizens. The United States is not the Sharifian Authority. Neither are Moors that are ipso jure Moors' protected people. So both the United States and de facto Moors, neither have jurisdiction when it comes to Consular Court. Well, how do we fix that as Moors? It's easy. Follow the rights and conditions, people. They gave us instructions in the year two thousand and ten. Moors must understand this. Let's read again. "Every confiscation, fine, or penalty must be imposed on foreigners." But how? By Consular Jurisdiction. But guess who else? Confiscations, fines, and penalties are imposed on Moors' subjects. By who? Sharifian Authority. Sharifian Jurisdiction. Everything is jurisdiction. Your state creates the jurisdiction. So what does that mean? When you're dealing with foreigners, you deal with foreigners as Sharifian Jurisdiction. When you're dealing with your own Moors of your own nat- nation-state, that's still Sharifian Authority, Sharifian jurisdiction because that's the government.
So when it says Consular Jurisdiction is the same as Sharifian Jurisdiction?
Yes. Yep. So this is all synonymous with this. This is your Sharifian Jurisdiction. This is your Consular Jurisdiction. Okay, ma'am.
Oh, "In the conditions which existed at the time, this article made it necessary for the prosecution of nationals of the twelve powers for fraud and smuggling to be dealt with in the Consular Courts."
Stop. So what did the ICJ, ICJ just say? When foreigners do something wrong, they all have to come to a Moroccan Sharifian Consular Court to deal with that dispute, whether it was civil or criminal. What does it say? "In the condition which existed at the time, this article made it necessary for the prosecution of nationals, or the nationals foreigners of the twelve Christian powers for fraud and smuggling to be dealt with in the Consular Courts." Consular Courts are what? The Sharifian Authority, Moroccan Authority of the Moors. Continue.
Since nineteen thirty-seven, the position has been one in which eleven of the powers have abandoned their capitulatory privileges and their Consular Jurisdiction has ceased to exist. Accordingly, Morocco has been able to make laws and to provide for the trial and punishment of offenders who are nationals of these eleven countries. The position of the United States is just different and must now be examined. Unlike the Madrid Convention, the Act of Algeciras was general in its scope and was not confined to a limited problem such as that of protection. On the other hand, the interpretation of the provisions of the Act must take into account its purposes, which are set forth in the preamble in the following words. "Inspired by the interest attaching itself to the reign of order, peace, and prosperity in Morocco and recognizing that the attainment thereof can only be effected by means of the introduction of reforms based upon the triple principle of sovereignty and independence of His Majesty the Sultan, the integrity of his domains, and economic liberty without any inequality."
Stop. See what the ICJ just did again? They just quoted another preamble. "The consciousness of what every, all the Christian powers were obligated to the equality of the Moroccan Empire, dominions, and its people, the subjects." Well, let's really get an understanding of what was said in the preamble. "Inspired by the interest attaching itself to the reign of order, peace, and prosperity in Morocco." Who's attaching? The Christian powers were attaching themselves to Morocco, attaching itself to the reign of order. They wanted order, peace, and prosperity in Morocco. What is, what is peace and prosperity? Amity and commerce in Morocco. And recognizing the attainment thereof can only be effected by means of the introduction of reforms based upon the triple principle of the sovereignty, so Moors are sovereign, and independence, what does that mean? Autonomous of His Majesty the Sultan. So when you see His Majesty the Sultan, keep in mind, that's the dominion, not the individual. Sultan is a ta- a title that represents the sovereignty of the people. The status of the Sultan, Sultan is another word for state. State and Sultan are synonymous. The state becomes the Sultan. It's the ruler. It rules what? The rules, bylaws of your state. The integrity of the domain, what's domain? Dominion, the land. The state, Sultan, state controls the integrity of the land and its laws and economics, liberty without any inequality. So therefore, the Sultan wants to maintain integrity in his land, maintain economics, that's trade, free trade without any inequality. Wait. Didn't we learn that somewhere else? Rights and conditions, people, Article five. "Moors have the right to maintain and strengthen their distinct political, legal, economic, social, social, and cultural institutions while retaining their right to participate fully." What does fully mean? Equal rights. "If they so choose in the political, economic, social, and cultural life of the state." Going back to ICJ, we gotta make sense of this. This is the same thing that's in the preamble. Same thing in the preamble of the Act of Algeciras. It's about equality for all. Anybody who do a business in Morocco must maintain equality of the law, international law. That's including Moors, but Moors have their original jurisdiction. Let's read it again. "Inspired by the interest attaching itself to the reign of order." What are Moors trying to do? Get order. How do you get order? Understanding international law, your politics. In order to maintain peace and prosperity in Morocco, you gotta understand politics. And recognizing that attainment thereof, attainment of what? Understanding reign of order. "Thereof can only be effected by means of the introduction of reforms based upon the triple principle." Here's the reforms. What's the triple principle? Nationality, Constitution, State. How do we do that? Because of our sovereignty, nationality. "Independence of His Majesty the Sultan, the integrity of his domains, and economic liberty without any inequality." Once you create the state, you have equality. There cannot be any inequality in the Moroccan Empire. All the Christian powers are bound to understanding there must be equality. So when Moors start making their claims to their estate, there must be equality. No one can stop Moors from making a claim to their estate because all the Christian powers agreed to equality. There can't be inequality. While the Moors are trying to get back their reign of order to maintain their sovereignty and independence in what? The dominions. Y'all understand what's happening? Let's continue.
Neither of the articles to which reference has been made above nor any other provisions of the Act of Algeciras purport to establish Consular Jurisdiction or to confirm the rights or privileges of the regime of capitulations, which were then in existence. The question therefore is whether the establishment or confirmation of such jurisdiction or privileges can be based upon the implied intentions of the parties to the Act as indicated by its provisions. An interpretation by implication from the provisions of the Act establishing or confirming Consular Jurisdiction would involve a transformation of the then-existing treaty rights of most of the twelve powers into new and autonomous rights based upon the Act, upon the Act. It would change treaty rights of the powers, some of them terminable at short notice. Example, those of the United States, which were terminable by twelve months, notice into rights enjoyable for an unlimited period by the powers and incapable of being terminated or modified by Morocco. Neither the preparatory work nor the preamble gives the least indication of such, of any such intention. The court finds itself unable to imply so fundamentally change in the character of the then-existing treaty rights as would be involved in the acceptance of this contention.
What's happening? The ICJ is saying, "We're not going to come in and say the United States of America can maintain their jurisdiction unimpeded and it being perpetual of having jurisdiction in Morocco over Moors." They're saying the Moors have every right to come back and enforce the Treaty of Madrid in Article fifteen because of equality opportunity. No matter how long Moors have been Negro, Black, and colored, they always have the right to come back and make a claim to their sovereignty of their domain and maintain equality, no different than any other states. So the ICJ is telling the United States of America, "Y'all don't have a right to undermine the inalienable and unalienable rights of Moors once they wake up and realize that the answer to the test is Article fifteen of the Treaty of Madrid." And then put together their state through politics. Okay, now here's the ICJ saying, "However..." Let's read it.
There is however, another aspect of this problem arising out of the particular articles to which reference has been made above. These are the articles which include provisions necessarily involving the exercise of Consular Jurisdiction. In this case, there is a clear indication of the intention of the parties to the effect that certain matters are to be dealt with by the Consular Tribunals. And to this extent, it is possible to interpret the provisions of the Act as establishing or confirming the exercise of Consular Jurisdiction for these limited purposes. The maintenance of Consular Jurisdiction insofar as it may be necessary to give effect to those specific provisions can therefore be justified as based upon the necessary intentment of the provisions of the Act. This result is confirmed by the provisions of Articles ten and sixteen of the Convention between Great Britain and France, France, of July twenty-ninth, nineteen thirty-seven. Uh, these articles refer to the jurisdictional privileges accorded on the basis of existing treaties or enjoyed by the United States of America under treaties at present in force. They presuppose therefore that the jurisdictional privileges of the United States, even after the surrender of British capitulatory rights, would not be limited to the jurisdiction provided by Articles twenty and twenty-one of the Treaty with Morocco of eighteen thirty-six. This view is also supported by the provisions of Article four of the Protocol of Signature to this Convention. This article provided for the abrogation of certain provisions of the General Treaty of eighteen fifty-six and as regards the Act of Algeciras for the renunciation of the rights, right to rely upon Articles one to fifty, fifty-four to sixty-five, seventy to seventy-one, all provisions of Article seventy-two after the word permit. Seventy-five, seventy-six to, uh, one nineteen. And it also provided that in Article eighty-one, the words "by the competent Consular Authority" must be deemed to be omitted, and in Article ninety-one, the word competent must henceforth be substituted for the word Consular. It is clear that in nineteen thirty-seven, France, representing Morocco and Great Britain, were proceeding upon the assumption that certain of the provisions of the Act of Algeciras recognized a limited Consular Jurisdiction for the purposes of the judicial proceedings therein described.
Stop. This is very important to understand. The ICJ is pointing out something. "By the competent Consular Authority." They're pointing out who has the jurisdiction to make decisions, and who is that? The Sharifian Authority. Who is that? The Moroccan Authority. Who is that? The Moors' Authority. Who is that? The Moors, as it says in the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, a Moor. You must understand that the ICJ recognizes Moors are not even there to defend themselves. So the ICJ is trying to make decisions and another, another party's not there to defend themselves. So the ICJ has to now say, "Okay, we can't make decisions for Moors. They're not here as a party." We really can't make decisions for France because they're not a party to the bilateral treaty. But the United States is here making claims, and the other party's not here to challenge the United States of America. The Moors are not here to challenge the United States of America. So the ICJ is trying to figure this out, and the only way they can figure it out is just simply stick to the strict sense of the treaty. What does it say? It says clearly. "By the competent Consular Authority." Who's the competent Consular Authority? Sharifian Authority, Moors. But wait. The competent, the competent party wasn't there, which tells you they're incompetent. Why? Because they're minorities. Negro, Black, and Colored at this time. And minorities cannot sign contracts. Minorities can't draft contracts, and minorities can't enforce said contracts because they're minor. So remember, I told you about your sticky note? Hold on to that sticky note because it's going to make sense to you. When we finish all of this, it'll make sense as to why the Moors are not there and why the Sultan of Morocco is not there either defending the Treaties of Peace and Friendship. It'll all make sense to you. But we gotta go through all of this first to get our basic fundamentals together before we come up with the proper concept as to why the Moroccan Sultan wasn't there. Alright? Let's continue.
The court is not called upon to examine the particular articles of the Act of Algeciras which are involved. It considers insufficient to state as its opinion that the Cons- that the Consular Jurisdiction of the United States continues to exist to the extent that may be necessary to render effective those provisions of the Act of Algeciras which depend on the existence of Consular Jurisdiction.
Stop. You gotta catch what the ICJ just said. They said they can't make decisions without the Moors being there. The competent court is not there. The Moors is not there. The Sharifian Authority is not there. The Moroccan Authority is not there. So the court can't make a decision because the decision-makers aren't there to defend themselves. Who makes the decision? Consul. Consul what? Consular Court of the Moors. They're not there to defend themselves. ICJ is having a tough time here. So the only thing they're left with is just reading it in the strict sense. Saying this is coming down to the competent Moors. And if competent Moors aren't here, that makes them incompetent, which means the other party, the United States of America, now gets to run their mayhem. They're gonna end up winning some certain things under discovery in this case because Moors wasn't there to make a challenge, to reject, or accept what's being put on the table. The ICJ is recognizing this. How do you know? Watch. The court cannot, the court is not called upon to examine the particular articles of the Act of Algeciras. Well, who didn't call upon them? Moors. Which are involved. It considers it sufficient to state as its opinion that the Consular Jurisdiction of the United States continues- that the consul jurisdiction of the United States continues to exist to the extent that may be necessary to render effective those provisions of the Act of Al-Dusers which depend on the existence of consul jurisdiction. So the United States of America, their states is dependent upon consul jurisdiction. Since the proper consul jurisdiction wasn't there, the ICJ is like, this is tough. Let's stick to the strict sense. Moors aren't here, but I'm still going to stick to these treaties. So therefore, Moors are not there, the United States of America gets to maintain their mayhem until the proper person showed up, the proper party. You must understand what's happening here. France is not the proper party. They're the power of attorney. And their client is not there to even speak up for themselves. The United States of America is getting away with mayhem only because the Moors are not here. Taking advantage of Treaty of Madrid, Article fifteen. Once they take advantage of Treaty of Madrid, Article fifteen, immediately now, they can go and enforce Sharifin Authority, which is the Act of Al-Dusers, and maintain what? Fines, penalties, and confiscations. Only Sharifin Authority can do that, but they must be competent and there's no competent Moors there at this time. Let's continue.
This interpretation of the act in some instance leads to results which may not appear to be entirely satisfactory. But that is an unavoidable consequence of the manner in which the Al-Dusers Conference dealt with the question of consular jurisdiction. The Court cannot by way of interpretation dri- drive, drive from the act a general rule as to full consular jurisdiction which it does not contain. On the other hand, the Court cannot disregard particular provisions involving a limited resort to consular jurisdiction which are in fact contained in the act and which are still enforced as far as the relation between the United States and Morocco are concerned.
You see what the ICJ just did? They summarized everything I just said. They're saying, we can't make a decision, the other party's not here, but they said however, in fact, in fact, jurisdiction is contained in the act, Act of what? Act of Al-Dusers nineteen oh six, and which are still enforced as far as the relations between the United States and Moors are concerned. What are they trying to tell you? What are they trying to tell us? When, when the Moors wake up, they can enforce the Act of Al-Dusers because they'll be the competent Sharifin Authority immediately. Why? Because the ICJ in nineteen fifty-two says it's still enforced. And they already told you early on, it was enforced. Let's go back to it. Every confiscation, which is Article one oh two of the Act of Al-Dusers nineteen oh six, every confiscation, fine or penalty must be imposed on foreigners by consul jurisdiction and on Moors subjects by Sharifin jurisdiction. They say when the Moors wake up, they can enforce the Act of Al-Dusers. When the Moors wake up, they can enforce the Treaty of Madrid in Article fifteen. When the Moors wake up, they can enforce all treaties made or which shall be made as the supreme law of the land. So the ICJ is stuck, like, where's the other party? Okay, well, just stick to a strict sense of the law. I can tell you what the contract says, even though the other party's not here to speak up. I'll tell you what it says, that's what the ICJ is saying. So let's read it one more time. This interpretation of the Act of Al-Dusers in some instances leads to results which may not appear to be entirely satisfactory. But that is an unavoidable consequence of the manner in which the Al-Dusers Conference dealt with the question of consul jurisdiction. The Court cannot by way of interpretation derive from the act a general rule as to full consul jurisdiction which it does not contain. On the other hand, the Court cannot disregard particular provisions involving a limited resort to consul jurisdiction which are in fact contained in the act and which are still enforced as far as the relations between the United States and Moors are concerned. When Moors wake up, the ICJ is saying, bring your dispute back to us because you can enforce it. They recognize the Moors were not there, they got handed a bad deal because everybody usurped the Moors and the Moors have usurped themselves for not enforcing their own rights. You gotta catch it. Okay, let's continue. The sixth contention.
The sixth contention of the United States is that its consular jurisdiction and other capitulatory rights in Morocco are founded upon custom and usage. This contention has been developed in two different ways. The first relates to custom and usage residing, preceding the abandonment of capitulatory rights in the French zone by Great Britain in nineteen thirty seven. The second relates to the practice since that date. Dealing first with the period of a hundred and fifty years, seventeen eighty-seven to nineteen thirty-seven, there are two considerations which prevent the acceptance of this contention. The first is that throughout this whole period, the United States' consular jurisdiction was in fact based not on custom or usage, but on treaty rights. At all stages, it was based on the provisions either of the Treaty of seventeen eighty-seven or of the Treaty of eighteen thirty-six, together with the provisions of treaties concluded by Morocco with other powers, especially Great Britain and Spain, invoked by virtue of the most favored nation clauses. This was the case not merely of the United States, but of most of the countries whose nationals were trading in Morocco. It is true that there were powers represented at the Conference of Madrid in eighteen eighty and at Al-Dusers in nineteen oh six, which had no treaty rights but were exercising consular jurisdiction with the consent or acquiescence of Morocco. It is also true that France, after the institution of the protectorate, obtained declarations of renunciation from a large number of other states which were in a similar position. This is not enough to establish that the states exercising consular jurisdiction in pursuance of treaty rights enjoyed in addition an independent title thereto based on custom or usage.
The second consideration relates to the questions of proof. This Court is in the asylum case, ICJ reports nineteen fifty. When dealing with the question of the establishment of a local custom peculiar to Latin American states, said...
Stop. Let's get a quick brief on what just happened. You see what the consul court, I mean the ICJ wants to look at now? They want to look at, did the Moors agree to be usurped? Or is the usurpation of the United States of America claiming jurisdiction, was that something they did ex parte? Was that, if you allow a decision, by United States claiming they have jurisdiction over Moors? Or did the Moors agree to allow the United States to have jurisdiction over Moors? That's what the ICJ is about to look at right now. Okay, just wanted to give you a quick brief, now where is your reading, you start comprehending that. Let's start from the top.
The second consideration relates to the question of proof. This Court in the asylum case, when dealing with the question of the establishment of a local custom peculiar to Latin American states, said, quote-unquote, "The party which relies on a custom of this kind must prove that this custom is established in such a manner that it has become binding on the other party. The Colombian government must prove that the rule invoked by it is in accordance with a constant and uniform usage practiced by the states in question and that this usage is the expression of a right appertaining to the state granting asylum and a duty incumbent on the territorial state." This follows from Article thirty-eight of the Statute of the Court, which refers to international custom as evidence of a general practice accepted at law.
Okay, the first sentence tells you everything you need to know. So first things first, let's, let's, let's get an understanding. ICJ says, where is the proof, the United States of America, that the Moors gave you jurisdiction over them? "The party which relies on a custom of this kind must prove that this custom is established in such a manner that it has become binding on the other party." What should they prove?
The agreement?
The agreement. Very good. Where is the proper written instrument? Where Moors agreed to be Negro, Black, and Color? Moors never agreed to that on a proper written instrument. Moors never agreed to the seventeen twenty-four Christian Black Codes. Moors never agreed to be aliens, denizens, and subjects of the United States of America in seventeen ninety-eight under the Enemy Alien Act. Moors never agreed to the Fourteenth Amendment to be persons. Moors never agreed to the Naturalization Act of eighteen seventy. Moors never agreed to the Act of Congress eighteen seventy-one, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So the ICJ is like, hey, United States of America, put on the record, let, show us that the Moors agreed to give up their treaty rights. Where is it? It doesn't exist. So that's what the ICJ is looking for. Give us the proof, where's the discovery document, put it on the record, United States of America. It don't exist. So therefore, you're maintaining jurisdiction only limited because Moors don't realize that they're Moors. But once they wake up, they can enforce all their sovereign rights. Let's continue.
In the present case, there has not been sufficient evidence to enable the Court to reach a conclusion that a right to exercise consular jurisdiction founded upon custom or usage has been established in such a manner that it has become binding on Morocco.
Ah, you see what they just did? ICJ came out and said, the United States of America, you failed to prove that Moors gave up their treaty rights. More importantly, the United States of America, are you the Sharifin Authority? No. The United States of America, are you the Moroccan Authority? No. The United States of America, are you Moors? No. So therefore, you're making what's called a presumed assumption that Moors gave you jurisdiction over top of it. Only because the Moors suffer from psychosis and cognitive dissonance or plain old use of force holding on to the Moors. Creating what's called the education board. Telling Moors that they're Negro, Black, and Color in your public schools. You're helping them to remain in a state of psychosis. How can Moors ever make a claim when they're learning from both their parents, their teachers at school, and their public officials, and their ministers, pastors, et cetera, that they're a prey on? Go ahead, Mo.
So the ICJ is the international law court, right?
Yes.
The jurisdiction of internationals.
Yes.
So with them knowing that the Moors were usurped, um, taken advantage of, lied to, and we have the United States here in court, knowing that they took the power from the people, how could this be law when it's all been, you know, lies? And it was built up on fraud?
Yes.
But yet, this is still a jurisdictional court and right is right and wrong is wrong.
Yes.
And yet, we're still asleep, still not knowing who we are. I mean, we're waking up slowly but surely, but for us to come back into power fighting a government that's, that was built up on lies?
Yes.
So we've just got to prove that they have been fraudulent this whole time?
Yes. Okay, when you're reading, watching the ICJ, good question. This is how Moors, why are we going over this? You must understand, you have to learn how to switch what's being said. They just asked the United States to prove something. Guess what? When Moors go to court, we're made to prove what the United States of America has done to us. You must understand, this is, this is an exercise in understanding how to come up with discovery documents. Exhibits and proof that the Moors can use in the ICJ to say, all this happened to us without our permission. Yes, it was acquiescence, but our acquiescence is only because they told us we were Negro, Black, and Color. We didn't consent to it, we submitted to it because we thought we were being told the truth. And they lied, that's called fraud. That's why you read the Act of Al-Dusers. Chapter five talks about fraud. And the fraud is pretending that the Moors are not the Sharifin Authority. So when you ask the question, you also want to go back to the nineteen fifty-six, excuse me, eighteen fifty-six, when Great Britain and France was talking about, to the Sultan, about his jurisdiction over his Moors. You go back to Article nine and the Sultan himself said, I don't want no Christian powers getting involved in the Moroccan empires that relates to the United States of America and the Moors subjects. No one from the outside could come in, deal with the civil matter between Moors and the United States of America. They can't get involved. So that's why the United Nations has been coming out with things like what? Righteous indigenous people trying to help the Moors from the outside in. Because they just can't, because of political rights, no one can cross over into the political jurisdiction of any state that's having a civil dispute with another, with their people, their citizens in that state. The United Nations can't get involved, they can only give their opinion, but they cannot actively get involved. So how do they do it, do it? They do it with a pen. They run all kinds of declarations that Moors, if they study international law, would have the answer to the test that's already well settled principle. That's why the ICJ is saying, when Moors wake up, they can be the Sharifin Authority immediately overnight. That's what makes them competent. One, your Khan Saint Goudi makes you competent, day one. Number two, put together your political status, you're ready.
In the present case, there has been sufficient evidence...
There has not.
There, there has not been sufficient evidence to enable the Court to reach a conclusion that a right to exercise consular jurisdiction founded upon custom or usage has been established in such a manner that it has become binding on Morocco.
Stop. You gotta really catch what the ICJ is saying about custom and usage. See, the United States of America's been trying to use what's called amity and commerce through using admiralty and maritime, saying that the law of the sea is on the land now. See, customs, what is customs? That's ports, that's maritime. That's customs, they changed everything from land law to sea law. So the United States of America is holding on to sea law instead of land law. And the ICJ just said, nah, everything you've been doing is admiralty and maritime law. That's not what's in the treaty. The treaty is about the treaty itself, about consul court, not custom and usage of Article twenty and twenty-one and twenty-four, which talks about consul court jurisdiction. But the United States of America is trying to claim admiralty and maritime law and the ICJ is saying, nah, that might have been your assumption and presumption, but that's not going to float here in the ICJ, all right? That's what you gotta catch there. Continue.
This contention has also been based upon the practice since the day when the treaty right of the United States to exercise extended consular jurisdiction and derivative rights came to... came to an end with the coming into operations of the Convention between France and Great Britain in nineteen thirty-seven. During this period, France and the United States were in negotiation with regard to a number of questions, including the renunciation of cap-
Compitulatory.
Compitulatory rights.
Stop. Once again, we must always remember that France was trying to help the Moors. They messed up a lot, but you could never forget about what France was trying to do. What did France do? During this period, France and the United States were in negotiations with regard to a number of questions, including the renunciation of compitulatory rights in Morocco. France was always trying to get the United States of America to let go of their false jurisdiction over Moors. Continue, Mo.
There are isolated expressions to be found in the diplomatic correspondence which, if considered without regard of their context, might be regarded as acknowledgements of the United States' claims to exercise Consular jurisdiction and other capulatory-
Compitulatory.
Compitulatory rights. On the other hand, the court cannot ignore the general tenor of the correspondence which indicates that at all times, France and the United States were looking for a solution based upon mutual agreement and that neither party intended to concede its legal position. In these circumstances, the situation in which the United States continued after nineteen thirty-seven to exercise Consular jurisdiction over all criminal and civil cases in the United States, nationals or defendants, is one that must be regarded as in the nature of a provisional situation acqui-
Acquiesced.
Acquiesced and by the Moroccan authorities.
Okay. We're gonna wrap up here. Watch this, what we just read, as we close out. Class number twenty, did you catch what the I C J said? I C J, listen to what they just said. Listen, Moors. Listen, Moors. "On the other hand, the court cannot ignore the general tenure of the correspondence which indicates that at all times, France and the United States were looking for a solution based upon mutual agreement and that neither party intended to concede its legal position." The United States of America was holding on to jurisdiction of Moors, and France was holding on to their French zone position, both claiming authority. "In these circumstances, the situation in which the United States continued after nineteen thirty-seven to exercise Consular jurisdiction over all criminal and civil cases of Moors in the United States and their nationals were defend- were, their nationals were defendants, is one that must be regarded as in-" Listen, "as in" "the nature of a provisional situation acquiesced and by the Moroccan authorities." What'd they say? The Moroccan authorities acquiesced. What does that mean? Moors agreed to be neither black and colored. So therefore, acquiesce means you wasn't upholding your own rights, Moors. Yes, you were usurped and ran out of government. But the Moors never came back to the Moroccan government of eighteen eighty and said, "Now, we want to create government again after eighteen eighty." This case is nineteen fifty-two. Moors have had since eighteen eighty to come back into a Moroccan government by giving consent to be bound to Moroccan laws. So in nineteen fifty-two, the I C J is saying right here that Moors, Moroccan Moors, acquiesced and gave the United States of America jurisdiction because we did not say objection or rejection to the United States. And neither were we there in nineteen fifty to nineteen fifty-two at that court case. That's acquiescence. The party didn't show up. The United States automatically won jurisdiction because no one rejected. France couldn't reject. Why? They're not Moors. France couldn't reject. Why? France is not the Sharifin Authority. They were no more than a power of authority. Power of attorney, I mean. They couldn't enforce things, only Moors can enforce. Let's understand it one more time. What did they say? What did the I C J say? Let's really understand this as we wrap up.
Yeah, because I'm confused now.
Let's start from the top, this paragraph. "During this period, France and the United States were in negotiations with regards to a number of questions, including the renunciation of compitulatory rights. There are isolated expressions to be found in the diplomatic correspondence which, if considered without regard to their context, might be regarded as acknowledgement of the United States' claims to exercise Consular jurisdiction and other compitatory rights. On the other hand, the court cannot ignore the general tenure of the correspondence which indicates that at all times, France and the United States were looking for a solution based upon mutual agreement and that neither party intended to concede its legal position. In these circumstances, the situation in which the United States continued after nineteen thirty-seven to exercise Consular jurisdiction over all criminal and civil cases in which the United States' nationals were defendants is one that must be regard regarded as in the nature of provisional situation acquiesced and by the Moroccan authorities." See that provisional situation? What does provisional situation mean? Uh-huh. That by the Moors not making a challenge, by acquiescence, that means they agree to be usurped.
Temporarily.
Temporarily. And till they return back into understanding Sharifin Authority. Till they come back into understanding Moroccan Authority. So who's the answer? Moors. I am that.